Play that, play that PBC. You gotta make sure it's.
That's true. This specialty SDR will be live from.
You have to get a little bit wider on the ride. Double duty. Double, I think it's a. You get a busy shot. Rock has at least got three. Should go five, but at least three times.
Please, Ron, you have your pledge of allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Meeting of the Wahoo City Council, October twenty eighth, seven o'clock PM. Open Meetings Act is posted on the wall. If they had more questions, they're more available at City Hall. Opened up the meeting and wrote on.
Ideas?
Here.
Rebel. Niggle?
Here.
Creepy?
Here.
Sweet?
Here.
Porter?
Here.
Okay. Anybody in the audience have any items that are on the agenda? I don't see anyone recognized, so I'll add it forward. No proclamations. Just a reminder, our next council meeting will be on November thirteenth instead of November eleventh. An observation of the. Department have reported.
So hot off the presses is my city manager report. I apologize, it's been a few months actually since, look, the last one was in August. So there's a fair number of things, I didn't go back always August, but I just wanna spend a little time kind of going over some things that have been happening at City Hall. I attended the, the annual conference in Lincoln in September and as I have enlisted in this report, at the N C M A Nebraska City County Managers Association meeting, I was elected to be Secretary Treasurer for that organization. And that's a progressive leadership role, so I'll be that. Then Vice President, then President-elect, then President, then outgoing President. During the President-elect period, Wahoo will be the host of the annual N C M A conference the end of June, so that's something to look forward to. I grow a few into helping with that. I think as you heard when we did our, to discuss our run commons, we worked with a development committee comprised of Board of Public Work reps, State Council reps, Planning Commission reps. And I think that that was a good opportunity for some of the details of that. That was a preliminary lab to flesh out some of the details, have a few more, a few deeper conversations and get some questions answered so that, not that, not to circumvent any public process, but it did give the opportunity for some folks to dive deeper into the project, project details and answer questions and also provide guidance to the developer in their going forward and presenting. On October first, I was asked to present to the Academic Planning Committee of the University of Nebraska-Lincoln on the value of saving the community and regional planning program at U N L. I happen to be a graduate of the College of Architecture and there's a few people in the industry that know that and so having the city's, a means balance perspective on why that program is important to the university and to the state, it was a great opportunity to share how community regional planning professionals have helped the city of Wahoo. And I provided a couple of examples, so that was kind of a fun opportunity. We, I did meet with FEMA and we finally have the May twenty twenty four flooding disaster project close out. We've received all of our reimbursements, provided all the documentation, so that's, that file will sit on my desk for three or four years and then I can paper it away. On October thirteenth, we met with Inspro Marsh McLennan Agency on our insurance benefits. And as I have in here, they, Medica, which is who we have our health insurance program with, offered a two percent increase in our premiums for twenty twenty six. Reps from Marsh McLennan argued that in our favor and got it down to no increase in our premiums. For next year, on the medical side, on the dental side, our premiums will be seven percent. We budgeted ten. Dental is a fairly small percentage of our total insurance benefit package and they said that that is very much what they're seeing across the board as an industry standard. So we've been with Principal for many years with that insurance package on the dental side. October fourteenth, I met with I T Committee, the Saunders County Supervisors regarding the records management system of the county. The county dispatch is switching to a motorola-based CAD system. And I don't understand all of the pieces that they're getting, but it is a very large system, six hundred thousand plus dollars that they're spending on it, which is, I think it's a records management system for law enforcement. It's a jail management system and then there's, I think, dispatching CAD. I don't know all the pieces. We only, we historically have had a relationship with the county where our records management system, our data from that has been stored on the county server. There's lots of reasons why we want to share information when it comes to a law enforcement standpoint. Not that, and we control access to that information by username and password if logged in. The former system the county had, which was called J E S, we, we bought into it initially. Our data was stored in the county. We had an interlocal agreement that there was no dollars changing hands regarding that. And with this new motorola system was rolled out, we asked multiple times for information on what this was gonna cost the city. Finally, in September, we got a dollar figure. Well, that was kind of after we already had all our budget stuff put together. We did have a little bit in the budget, but this conversation that I had with the county was really to understand how they came up with that number, seven hundred and fifty dollars a month and, and basically to advocate for our Wahoo residents that, our residents are already paying for that six hundred thousand dollars system. Our fair share of that, right? And so I, I'm sure that, I haven't heard how the county board has come back on it. I think our max will be that seven hundred and fifty dollars a month, which not really a fan of, but I advocated for something significantly less than that as all of our residents are residents of Saunders County. We all pay for the Sheriff's Department services, but we all, on top of that, we pay for our own law enforcement services. So we'll see what comes from that. We had Ryan, Travis, Teresa and I, which comprise of an internal development committee, did meet with someone interested in, other than what I'll be talking about to you here a little bit about affordable housing in Wahoo. We had a meeting with L R M to discuss strategic ways to reduce our annual premiums on our insurance. Ryan, Teresa and I met with refs, more Teresa and Ryan than me, but with, from N D E D on the manufacturing month in Nebraska. And the result was the article that I sent to you that was celebrating Omaha Steel, Wahoo Locker and Rebellion Fabrication on the manufacturing side here in Wahoo. I would encourage you to read through that because I think some of those organizations kind of fly under the radar and really should be celebrated as bringing positive things to the community. I also, Jerry and I yesterday met with county supervisors, refs and N D O T Infrastructure Hub representatives about potential funding opportunities for Fifteenth Street and the expressway intersection. The county, following the Economic Development Forum that Falcon's Office hosted in Ithaca, the county decided to submit to the Infrastructure Hub an application for County Road L improvements west of the expressway, which we all know are needed. The refs from N D O T came back and said, "Our application for potentially a federal appropriation or earmark contains a lot more power if there's agencies that are collectively working together." The County Road L project is essentially a farm-to-market road and has a pretty small impact in terms of, you know, Saunders County impact. Moving the intersection, kind of as we have talked about before with our study update from F H U, brings a more regional approach to solving the problem. There's a, there's a solution that's needed. We don't know exactly what that is at that intersection for safety. And kind of combining all of these together and applying for federal dollars, it sort of makes it easier for a federal delegate to support a project because it covers their whole region or especially, and for the state to, to support in finding other funding opportunities. So that's in the works, that's a long ways out. The federal appropriations applications are due like in April typically during the year. And then if you're successful, kind of like the county was on the radio project, it takes a bit of time for that money to actually come back and be able to form a project. We are completing some staff training. Ryan is handling most of it on effective improved communication. And today, tomorrow, the topic is high-quality conflict resolution. And so I think there's some good things that are, we come out of that. And, you know, I always approach those kinds of things. You see the staff sitting there kind of not really, some are engaging, some are not really interested in engaging. But if we can all walk away from those opportunities, taking maybe two or three things that, hey, that's something that I can work on and it gets an opportunity for all of us to improve. Just a reminder, in November, that there's a Board of Adjustments meeting and I have to turn to Travis for the exact topic of that Board of Adjustment meeting. And then there's a Planning Commission meeting. We are closed on the eleventh. We're closed Thursday and Friday, basically. On projects, Wilmer Ridge, we will have the final warranty agreement on the agenda for the next meeting. I will have a detailed update on our city facilities at the next meeting. On the twenty twenty five snowstorm, we've been working with P D M G from FEMA to review the submittals for the storm event. We are working to keep that and I don't, I don't think there's a problem with it. We're very close to that million-dollar threshold. If we go over the million dollars for a specific project, that kicks the project into a different category. It's a large project now and additional requirements. So I think we're at like nine hundred and seventy thousand right now, so we're quickly.
Two hundred.
Yeah. I, I, we did submit the C D B G grant application for the downtown revitalization grant. We went ahead and sent out an R F P to the consultants. It's due December second and very clearly the award is contingent on receipt of the grant, but that allows us to get, hopefully get that ball rolling so that if we are successful in getting the grant, we can move forward with that project sooner than later. What else? The Wahoo Airport was successful in securing a state aid grant. There's no federal dollars in that, but to cover costs of some taxiway improvements and the areas to be improved. I know we just did a really large rebuild of the runway. The, these areas of the taxiway are listed as in very poor condition. The Department of Aeronautics comes out every year and does a pavement assessment evaluation. And these are areas that are, always show up in red on the map. Everything else is green and these are red, so this will address this. And then we are also working on a hangar project for construction for next year and that will include three T-hanger spaces and a larger box hangar. We have a very long waiting list for our T-hangers, like pages long, like fifty. People interested in getting the T-hangers. So with that, the airport authority has started taking a more aggressive approach in making sure that the hangers that contain aircraft that's being flown and not stored, they've adopted a policy to, to go into effect for this lease year that if you can't provide as a tenant that you have an airworthy, you have an airworthy certificate, you have maintenance records, all the things, then the airport authority can move you into the storage rate, which is like double or three times the hangar rate. So, and in line with what, who would pay if you were renting a storage unit from that commercial business? In the packet, and I see that my piece here, someone is gonna maybe skip over the market suites information, but I do have plans if you, if that's something you wanted to share there here in the packet.
Sure, you want to?
Okay. The other thing that I wanna talk about, which is this, how's it, affordable housing trust fund money. As, as I think I previously told you, we were successful in getting this grant. It's five hundred eighty-six thousand eight hundred seventy-five dollars. And there's two contingencies on that. The first is that we have to be able to provide a seventy-five thousand dollar match. And the second is that we have to be able to provide location, not week, but we have to have secured the location for those six homes very soon, like in the next two weeks. So we originally have been working with community action partners out of Lincoln. Also been talking with J E O Investments about some of their smaller lots on the very west side of their property. I'm not really concerned about finding the lots because if both of them are on board to work through something where we have, have lots that we'll be able to use. The most pressing issue is this seventy-five thousand dollars. I know Teresa has talked to several businesses about finding local dollars to contribute to that. At our last council meeting, we approved allocating twenty thousand dollars of our housing rehab loan funds, the reuse money that's come back towards that. So we have fifty-five thousand dollar shortfall. And so my question for you and the information that I have here is, I, I know we can't vote on this, but I would like to have a rough idea if you think this is the way we could go or not, but using some Keno funds to complete this match. So on the back of this sheet, we have, going into the beginning of this fiscal year, we have a hundred and seventy thousand dollars in our Keno fund. We expect, and we never know whether people are gonna gamble a lot this year or not gamble. You'll see the fluctuations in the revenue over the past few years. We have thirty-five thousand dollars in the budget. We have forty thousand of community betterment expenses planned in the form of a match for the downtown revitalization planning grant. We get that and then equipment for the parks department. And so I guess I'm just looking for your thoughts on whether, if I put on the agenda at the next meeting that you'd be willing to commit this, these Keno funds as that match, is that something you are interested in or we need to be searching for other opportunities? Just as, for, for, just so you understand, this five hundred eighty-six thousand plus our local match would be used to get six homes constructed and sold to eligible buyers. Eligible buyer is a hundred and twenty percent of, of average median income. And I include it on here, so for twenty twenty five, the A M I, or the hundred and twenty percent equates to, for a one-person household, ninety-nine thousand three hundred. For a two-person household, it's a hundred and thirteen thousand four hundred fifty. And so a four-person home is a hundred and forty-one thousand eight fifty. And because we, Saunders County has a higher median income, that is, that hundred and twenty percent is, is higher and sort of opens it up to additional people. There's also limitation on the purchase price of the home. The best that I can find with twenty twenty three data is three hundred and twenty-five thousand. It might be a little bit more than that for, you know, by twenty twenty six. So I guess I'm just looking for a little guidance from you. If you wanna have more conversation about it, certainly can.
That's a good idea, we should talk about it.
Okay. So if I were to say to Senac, Jim Warholman with Sen, Senac, I think the council would be willing to commit the fifty-five thousand for the Keno funds. Is that, am I speaking correctly or, I mean, obviously you haven't taken action, but I'm just.
Our consensus is the heads are going this way.
Okay. And then at the last council meeting, you guys were interested. Thank you, Jerry, for reminding me this, that you would like to see information on market suites. And I know Travis had some other information in here, but these were photos that I took of the plans because as I said coming in, I needed till the last minute to grab some of these, so I don't. I have one rotate this.
Is that a PDF?
No, this is a photo that I took on the phone. Huh?
You right-clicked, yeah.
I can send that to you. I know, I sent this to George. I don't know if I included, I don't think I included everybody.
No. The, the, the top, next to, to the left of fifteen percent. That's page seven, I think, so that one.
View controls?
Yep, and then you can do a rotate.
Oh, there it is.
Rotate. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Carl.
So this is the Beach Street perspective. So the park is right across the street to the east. This is Fifth and Beach. These are the main level residences. This is the corner of Fifth and Beach, so you're looking to the west and you're looking to the south here. The steps that are on the agenda for consideration are these right here and right here. That's helpful. And then this is the Fifth Street perspective.
You're kind of by a DJ's salon.
Yeah, this is, so the first bank is right over here. And these are the commercial banks right here. And you'll see these awnings, I think it says signage on those awnings. And then the second and third floor levels are the residences. I included in here some site information. So this kind of, this shows the elevation and so you'll see the directions of the water flow draining. You can see here that this is, this is a lower area. The water's flowing this way and this way. This.
Okay, so that shows, that's better about where the steps would be, so there's no cutout to walk around or anything like that.
Right, so this, this would be level here to get to entering into these spaces.
For ADA.
For ADA, right? And then because of the grade change, there would be steps here. So you wouldn't have to go all the way around to get, you could step down. But if you need to go around, it is ADA compliant. And then you'll see this speckled area here because these are living quarters and there's windows right along here. The plan is to have the, I think it's four foot of non-concrete surfacing so that someone walking by won't just peek their head in the window. There's a little bit of a barrier, I mean, it still could happen. And these steps are, they're not, you're not gonna be walking here, so it's not much of a trip hazard, right? I, I, I wanna be very clear, we don't wanna end up with what we have over on Fifth and Broadway where you have those apartment steps out into, right? Because those are just not, it's not good. Um, what else do we have? This is the paving, so you'll see the sidewalks around. This is on the, this is the north side and the east side and then.
From the soft scape, I think it's six feet from.
Six, okay.
Yeah, I believe so. It's from where the rocks start to the edge of, beginning of curb.
Oh, the, the paving is six foot.
Yeah, six.
Yeah, but the barrier between the wall, the space between the wall.
Two or three feet.
Yeah, okay.
Does it seem crooked if it is the four feet, right?
That could be. So this is in here, just for you. Again, these are the commercial areas. You can study them more in the packet. And these are all, this is residential and residential with garages and parking. And again, the conversation we have had is about the city looking at additional parking along this side of the street and in this space here. This is the current boundary of the street.
But, but speaking of that, I know the, so you have the permit for one parking stall per bedroom, which we have since changed, so I, I do think we're going to have more cars there than what we're anticipating. So, you know, if you use one and a half parking stalls per bedroom, you, you need another thirty or forty. I, it'd be nice to be able to identify where they're not gonna go. And they're not gonna go on beach. They're not gonna go on forest. We're not gonna allow overnight parking there, are we?
Well, we don't have overnight parking. We do have a permitting process for a tag, which is not being actively used, but we did put that in place where.
Right.
Someone could come in, pay fifty dollars for the tag.
Right.
They can park in a designated location that the city determines.
Which we haven't determined.
Which we haven't determined, right, so.
I guess I'm, I'm just making sure that it, it's understood that, you know, that, that parking that we're looking at putting in, which I think needs to be there, but that is not solely for the use of that project. That will be determined at a later time. The, the question I do have from Mike is, you know, I'm, obviously I'm looking at my building and, and you are thirty feet away from the building, but you have, you know, it's, it's not diagonal. It's straight in parking. I didn't know if it would be better served to be diagonal right there.
That's since been, so we're gonna do the process, it's since been updated. That will, that will be diagonal, it'll be one way with proper signage going nowhere.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I, I will say, I know Travis is in the process of review and has gone back and forth with Mike and his team on things. And I, I, that's not reflected on what I have here.
Yeah, this is the permit set, so every permit set has updates along the way. Then we just update that sheet, so we're just not updating a thousand pages at a time.
And, and I don't wanna harp too much on parking, but I guess I was talking to some customers in Omaha that were having a hard time getting rented up because they were having a hard time parking. You know, they were stuck at eighty percent occupancy, they couldn't get more there. And, and so I, I hope you have a hundred percent occupancy, I just wanna make sure you have parking.
I appreciate it, I think we'll be all right.
You guys can review these if you want from, as far as, if you're interested in floor plans or whatever, but then there's elevations for, like this is the west elevation of.
Of Building A.
Building A, yes. And this is the south elevation of Building A. And the north elevation, so this is what people will see when they drive down Fifth Street.
Looking south.
Yes.
Stewardess looking from your teller window.
Yeah, I noticed you've got a nice little workout room that'll be right out the window. It's still, and nobody ever uses.
Yeah.
It'd be a vacant area.
It might be collecting dust. That's where James made.
And then this is what you would see when you're looking from the park to the west.
Just of Building A.
Yeah.
So that goes, that goes to the alley on the south. And then you got Building B further to the south, across the easement.
So then this is Building B. This is, you'll see Building A here and then Building B, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Everything's the same cadence.
Right, the, from the exterior, it's the same finishing. Yep. And then again, there's plans in here and elevation, so this is the.
And this elevation doesn't really show, but, you know, the sidewalk will be a little bit lower, so that's why we put in the railing on the first floor, just as added precautions and also security for people coming off of Smith Park and stuff like that, so.
Because there is a grade difference.
Change, I think it's eighteen inches.
And you really don't want your residents coming in and out of those side doors, is what you're trying to prevent?
Correct, yeah. We're trying to keep all flow.
Yeah.
That's your door.
That makes sense.
This is the.
Looking east from, from the real estate, yeah, from the real estate building.
This is what you'd see from the senior center.
Yes.
And then this is what, it bumps up against the Building A.
In between the easement, yeah.
Yep.
Through alley.
So... That's in your packet if you want to study it further, and if you need, that's not what I wanted to do. If you need something more, Travis can email you. Sorry.
Melissa, do you mind if I add?
Yeah, go ahead.
All I just want to say is, uh, you know, the utilities, um, is it Rock? Or is it Rock?
Rock.
Rock. The electrical engineer has been really good, and so Mike's team. We've had, it's a bigger project, so we've engaged Matt Kalin at JEO to help us reviewing the plans, and so they've been very receptive. There were some things we've asked them to modify, and so they've been good, very good to work with on utility side of things.
Any questions?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, you had met with LARM and you had asked for some ways to reduce annual premiums. Any ideas? Is that something, that's a work in process?
It's a work in process, and I can report to you, you know, there's some of our schedules that need to be cleaned up and looked at, so we're in the process of starting with vehicles. We're working through that, and we're moving to equipment, work through that. There's some strategy in terms of, you know, vehicles, for instance. Uh, most of our vehicles stay here in town. Is it necessary to have conflict collision on all of them? Maybe not, right? And so that happens to be a more expensive piece of vehicle coverage, so.
How about we sit down and value buildings at some time, or they will help us figure out what we should insure and how much, and?
Yeah, and we talked, we spent some time talking about that as well, like what... I think at the end of the day, if what we're trying to ensure for is catastrophic loss, because I think that's what the public is expecting. So if a tornado came through and took out all of Hat Gray Park and City Hall and the fire hall and the library, do we have enough coverage to adequately finance rebuilding those things? And I think that's the piece that we have to keep in mind, because it is tempting to start pulling pieces out and say, well, we don't really need to cover that. And we talked about a higher deductible, we talked about, you know, limitations on property coverage and property in the open and all those things. So we're work, it's a work in progress, and we're working through it, and we do have resources in the form of Clint Simmons, who's an agent for LARM, we have LARM staff in Lincoln. Uh, the individual from Travelers that came out and did the inspection indicated he would be willing to help us review or suggest ideas, and then James Charlesworth kind of said the same thing, so we do have resources. We're just... It can be very overwhelming, and we're trying to just-
There's a lot there.
Piece by piece, yeah, so. Do you have anything you want to add?
No, I'll take it. Uh, flyings from the airport, are we done with those? That was great that those flying in?
Those are finished, and they were free.
Yeah, but, yeah, the guy's doing the breakfast in the morning.
Wahoo is officially the host of the Experimental Aircraft Association's flying breakfast that they host once a month.
Okay.
So in the spring, when the weather, I would guess, in March or April, they'll start those up again.
Very nice, I'm glad they're doing that. And I, I always the question, is they're gonna do that again?
Yeah, I don't, we haven't heard anything negative from the group of, I think there's eight or ten members that come out and host that, and they, they said, we're like, just have it down to a well-oiled machine. We all know who's cooking sausage and who's flipping the pancakes, and so.
I wish, I wish we could let the community do more and let people know to go out there.
Yes.
And walk around and see the facilities. I think it'd be fun.
You know, I think it was a little bit of a, let's try this out before we start advertising it, but I think it is something we could include in the Chamber newsletter that goes out every week and on social media, yeah, so. Anything else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, very good report. A lot of things going on. Okay, um, incentive agenda. The late entry that I failed to, I wasn't here through for the Department of Meeting. Uh, number three, the appointment of John Miyoshi. Some of you might not be real familiar with him. He was a former manager of the NRD. Eight years ago, uh, he, uh, was on, the last eight years he did on the state, uh, economic or funding board. He goes off that this year. He talked to me and said he'd like to get involved with city activities. He mentioned planning and zoning. He's been on it many years ago. And, uh, so he, uh, when I talked to him, he said he'd like to have his name submitted.
So he's filling out a vacancy?
Pardon?
He's filling a vacancy that we've been looking at.
Well, we have two vacancies.
We have two, okay.
Yeah, one is on the council by name, but he want, he wanna, he wants his name to go off. You have to have it on there in case it is absolutely necessary to have a meeting. And, uh, so this will be the one that's been vacant. I do have a person that, uh, one of the planning and zoning members has suggested, and we've sent a volunteer sheet out to have him fill it out. Both, the new ones will be within the city of us.
I think you have to do a very good job.
I think so, too.
What should we approve, the, the second?
I have a second. Go call him.
Creasy?
Yes.
Ideas?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Sweet?
Yes.
Orford?
Yes.
Okay, um... Public Carrying, I've tonight, it's approval of temporary stop signs at the intersection of Fourth and Beach. This is because of the construction I'm familiar with.
I, I wasn't involved in putting this on the agenda, Travis, do you? I think this was a result of the last conversation, and, uh, I think a four-way stop is what we discussed. Is that right?
Right, it was discussed because of the temporary fence, construction fence and everything, that being, uh, kind of a worrisome intersection with the, um... Senior Center and what have you there, so, um, I think that's why Christina decided to put this on there, just for discussion if we decide to or, or whatnot, so.
I think we discussed that.
We were gonna discuss it, especially with construction there. We have kids who go to the park and the pool following next summer. And then that's gonna be a tight corner, trying to walk right by there to get over to the pool.
Sometimes there are issues with putting up stop signs where there haven't been stop signs, where people blow through them because they're not expecting to see them, but-
That's the problem right now, we blow through that intersection. And there's no, they're looking for a runway or anything.
I understand that, so we would, we would have conversation about how we call attention to that.
Well, we put those solar flashing lights on it.
I'm not sure how many of those we have, but we can talk about that.
Definitely, because that would obviously draw attention.
Yeah, I treat that intersection like a four-way stop.
Oh, I do now, because I've been the guy that, so you start rolling through, and then you realize instead of being treated like you, like it's supposed to be, it's the first one to stop, it's the one that has to stop. Like, oh, you started to slow down, that means I don't have to, like, and just go.
Yes.
So this would be, if you're in favor of it, it would be a resolution to put the place temporary stop signs at Fourth and Beach for a four-way stop during the construction of the park.
Why don't you make it, can you make it permanent? I mean, it's always been a dangerous intersection ever since I was here, so.
Start with temporary.
I'm sure you'll link up that way, though.
I guess everyone, yeah.
I'm sorry, you're permanent.
We'll, we'll temporary for the time being.
Yeah, you're gonna make it more permanent, but like-
It's good to share your words.
Yeah.
Once we get everybody trained with temporary, then we-
Well, the permit is one way to tell the construction of the building anyways to put it permanent, I think, because the temporary would be further out by the temporary fence.
I'll second, uh, Stuart. Other discussion? Go call him.
Creasty?
Yes.
Sweet?
Yes.
Orford?
Yes.
Ideas?
Yes.
Number two, approval of garbage haulers. This is just a continuation, right, because we had, we had wish, we had wish for this to be pressed to.
Yep. As to did, uh, get caught up, get current on their operation tax.
Evidence of them.
Evidence.
Second. Questions? Go call him.
Creasty?
Yes.
Ideas?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Sweet?
Yes.
Orford?
Yes.
Number three, approval of the twenty twenty-six wholesale power contract with Nebraska Public Power District. This was at the last, uh, renewal of the agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, council members. Uh, I do have some paperwork here, I guess I apologize. I thought I was gonna have this figured out probably. Melissa does also have a digital copy, I'm sure, and then- And then anybody wants to see copies of these, I have. I thought I had more, I think you guys are welcome.
I can go back to you, too.
So, a little bit about, uh, the twen-, uh, the twenty twenty-six wholesale power contract. As you guys have probably heard and as we talked about, thank you to Councilman Creasty, and of course Ryan Ideas and Chris Rappel. Sit on the Board of Public Works, and Mayor Johnson was at their last meeting, but we, we started talking through, um, renewal of our contract with NPBD way back, um, kind of the beginning of twenty twenty-four. And I remember at the time asking, um, Lauren Kaputzke, uh, Kaputzke is that how you say her last name? She, uh, she actually lives just south of Wahoo. She's the CFO of Nebraska Public Power District, been with a few years now. And said, when, what's your goal for getting this turned around? And she said, well, we really hope to have this by the end of the year. This is the beginning of twenty twenty-four. And here we are again, the twenty twenty-five, which is a much more, uh, obviously realistic timeframe when you think about what the undertaking was. NPBD, uh, and they did a good job of discussing this at our board meeting, is in a, is at a time of historic growth. That growth is twofold, is, uh, it is actual jet load growth, right? The data centers, the, um, AI technology, but it's also a lot of the value add economy across Nebraska. The hydrogen economy, you know, our, our people like Monolith that are, that are really just sucking up a lot of, of load. Um, and then the growth that we're just seeing in Nebraska. And also some of the regulations that are being imposed by the Southwest Power Pool are dictating the need for exponential generation, or a new fleet of generation being built by end of DDA. Our current contract went till twenty thirty-five. We signed this in twenty sixteen. Uh, the, the Wahoo signed that before I had gotten here. Um, we've been a customer of NPBD for a very long time. This contract negotiation was very positive. I, I want to say it was, it wasn't easy. Uh, it wasn't a negotiation that was, you know, level, that we went through quickly because of the level of commitment. I'm asking you, and NPBD is asking you, uh, the Board of Public Works recommended to you, to approve a contract that would go for thirty-five years. So thirty-five years is even beyond, I mean, maybe I'll still be around Wahoo, you guys can keep me around till then, but I, I kind of doubt it. By that time, I'll probably need to be retired. So if you think about that, that's, that's beyond my career, that's beyond most of probably you will be, will be on this council. Maybe your children will be on the council any more than thirty-five years. So this is a big commitment from all of us to, to sign a thirty-five year contract, so we asked for some things in return from NPBD. I was very invested in this contract negotiation from the very beginning. Um, all of you know me, you know, I don't tend to keep my mouth shut very well, so I, I immediately started kind of diving into it, was invited to a small group that wasn't such a small group. There was about twenty of us customers that engaged in some contract negotiation, and that went really well. But it got to a point where we needed to start going through the language of the actual contract, and you can't do that with twenty people, so. It was narrowed down to myself, CEO of South, um, Southern Public Power District, the CEO of Morris Public Power District, the CEO of the Nebraska GNT, and, um, the CEO of Luke Public Power District. Those were all made up the largest power districts, and then I represented the municipalities. This was with the leadership, the CEO, CFO, and Vice President of, of NPBD, and we just got into a room, just, you know, the seven of us, and we started kind of just working through what we could do. And where we really ended up was that it was originally a forty-year ask of the contract. We ended up with a thirty-five year contract. Uh, some of the other takeaways from this contract, um, if you want to scroll down, Melissa, a little bit. Some of the options for customers, as, as opposed to right now, we are a full-service customer of NPBD meeting. From, under the current contract, we have to take all of our usage minus our WAPA allotment, because we get about twelve percent of our power from WAPA. That's a pre-existing contract. And then we get, we are allowed up to two megawatts of qualified load generation or solar. So we get about six percent of our power from our solar farm that we buy from, this, uh, right near Wahoo. The remainder had to be NPBD. Under the new contract, starting in twenty thirty-five, we could actually cap what we take from NPBD if we want to participate in the Southwest Power Pool market directly. So an example of this might be if a, a Google data center or somebody huge, a new core steel came to us and said, hey, we're in Omaha, steel said, we want to be the next new core steel. We're gonna build so much generation, but we want to be able to buy our power directly on the Southwest Power Pool. We could cap from NPBD and serve directly to this customer. And there's a lot of details on how we can do that, but that's an option under the new contract. Again, with a thirty-five year contract, it's nice to have flexibility. The other part of this new contract that's different, the old one was our qualifying local generation, that solar I was talking about. Right now, we're capped at two megawatts. We're still capped at two megawatts, or ten percent. However, if another customer within the NPBD pool says, we don't want our, our solar, we don't want our QLG, we'll give it to Wahoo. We're allowed to do that. We can, so the overall ten percent NPBD is not gonna exceed. However, within that ten percent, customers can share, and that gives us some flexibility. I'm not saying we're interested in doing that, but maybe future councils, maybe future Board of Public Works will want more gen-, local generation and want to have that flexibility. The new contract gives us that. The bet, performance debt and, uh, offset credit, so right now, this is kind of a confusing, or it's not confusing, it's just a little detailed. Currently, under our current contract, NPBD has to perform in the, the forty-fifth quartile of all, of all other utilities in theirs that are similar to them in the United States of America, being wholesale power providers to, like, cooperatives or, or public power or municipal customers like us. And currently in our new contract, they, they have to do this. If they don't do it for five consecutive years, we can leave the contract. The new contract is not going to allow us to leave, but it will reduce what our early termination fee or exit fee would be. And so that has to be signed by basically tonight, in order for us to get that part of the contract. It was kind of a carrot that was put out there to get people to serve. The early termination and exit fee. When we talk about a thirty-five year contract, the truth is, this, after twenty thirty-five is, is not, it's a ten-year, you have to stay in contract. After your thirty, twenty, uh, ten, the next twenty-five years, we can exit this contract with a termination fee. Now, I will say that fee is pretty cost prohibitive for us to ever truly look at exiting, but we do have that choice. We can make a business case. If we can make the business case for exiting, if NPBD, let's say their future boards are, are going off the rails and not running NPBD correctly, the rates are going up, we can make the business case to exit if we chose to. The way we do that is by paying our portion of the remaining debt that NPBD has. So if Wahoo makes up right now point five percent of the overall capacity that NPBD has, we would have to pay point five percent of their debt that they have, or have incurred while we were a customer. Which doesn't sound like a lot, right? But they're getting ready to borrow about, uh, I think on, on some of this, it was upwards of three billion dollars right away, and so... Here we go, yeah, seven hundred eighty-nine billion, uh, by June of twenty-nine, seven hundred twenty million, June of twenty-nine, one hundred and fifty-two, or one thousand fifty-two, or one point zero five two billion by twenty thirty-one, and a hundred and fifteen, so whatever that adds up to be, it's, it's a lot, right? So when you add that kind of point five percent of that much money, adds up to be pretty cost prohibitive to exit. I, I don't, that doesn't make me nervous, um, because I, I base on, uh, NPBD on the history we had with NPBD. And I, I feel there's also so many guardrails to protect us as rate payers and as a customer of NPBD. Both through the Nebraska Public Power District's board, and I think there's the ultimate NPBD board, which is the unicameral of, of Nebraska. And we've already seen that there's, you know, I, I, I won't get into my opinion on it, but we've seen that the governor is suing OPPD based on their decision to, uh, retire a coal plant. So there is oversight provided by the State of Nebraska Legislature on top of- on top of the NPBD elected Board that we have representation on. So, those are some things that, uh, that give me, they give me, uh, plenty of confidence that we'll be okay. There was one other thing upfront, up at the beginning of this, Melissa, that I, I'd forgotten to, uh, mention, and that was the Customer Committee. The Customer Committee is made up, that was something I had pushed really hard. And you can see the makeup, it was 11 members, uh, one, um, uh, I don't know if it breaks up what, what the members are made of. But we, we, the 11 members, four of those members will be municipal customers. And that was something that got to be a little heated during contract negotiations. But again, when I say heated, it was always respectful and professional. But there was some pushback from the Rural Electrics because we are gonna get, uh, four out of the 11 will be municipal customers. However, we only make up about 13% of the total capacity of NPBD. And there was some feeling that, well, maybe these municipal customers are getting too much representation on this Board, this committee. And that my, my pushback and NPBD support was when we started getting into meter counts and when we started looking at, you know, the, the fact that us municipalities also represent the majority of the population when it comes to NPBD's customers. And, and when we talk about being a political subdivision that's maybe sits a little higher than the, the Public Power District. So, I think in general, uh, again, there wasn't as, as though we were, you know, very angry negotiations, but that was probably the he- most heated that, that I got during was some of that pushback. And I, I appreciated the support from NPBD leadership in making sure that made it into the contract, municipal representation. Overall, uh, I recommend it to the Board of Public Works. The Board of Public Works voted 5-0 to approve this contract. We talked a little bit, the leadership of NPBD was there. Um, we had CFO and Vice President of, uh, NPBD there with us. And, uh, there has been some, Teresa Klein can mention this too. Melissa can mention it with her history here. There is a lot of support we get from NPBD being a customer that's just, it's past just keeping the lights on. There's support we get, um, through the Economic Development Office that is tremendous. There's things that they, we hit the trickle-down from NPBD. The other bigger picture of what else would we do if we didn't sign with NPBD? The options are limited. We only have, we have 10 years left on our current contract. So, we could've said, oh, we're just gonna risk it and see what, what's out there for what are options in 10 years. Had we, if we don't move forward with signing, we're moved to the back of the list and treated like a new customer starting in 2026. We'd have to basically ask to be returned back into the contract. And as long as there is capacity, they have a statutory rate requirement to allow us in. But it can come with costs, right? The other side of that is even if we could get out in 2026, would we want Wahoo to participate directly in the Southwest Power Pool? And I would say no. The resources we need to compete, we see it on the natural gas side, right? We can, and that's a much smaller budget number than what we have. I think there's so many benefits for us on the natural gas side. On the 11, because we don't have this option to be under, you know, an umbrella. On the electric side, it's even, even more dangerous and not dangerous, but it can be more volatile. In the hourly rates, the ex, that we're exposed to, the capacity requirements we would have to meet in order to meet the requirements of the Southwest Power Pool would be, I believe, cost prohibitive on that side of things. So, I think in general, I have spent, um, an exhaustive amount of hours making sure this recommendation didn't come from a place of, well, you know, here we go. I guess this is what's good. I really did, uh, take a, a very active role in making sure this is what was best for the residents and the citizens and the customer of Wahoo Utilities. And I believe this is, uh, the best move forward for Wahoo, the city of Wahoo. So, that's my recommendation. Um, I guess I'll shut up and let you ask some questions if you have any questions.
I don't have any questions, but they commented that he's a great negotiator and it was all at high level. Everybody was well-informed about Wahoo.
How does this impact our power plant?
So, the next contract we're gonna discuss about this, we'll, we'll after this. Uh, what it does though is be, you can be a capacity purchase customer without being a wholesale power customer. But I don't think they have anybody who's a capacity purchase without being at least a wholesale power customer through, like, so like the city of Franklin is a wholesale power customer of Southern Public Power District who is a wholesale power customer of NPBD. So, it does affect our power plant in those ways, yep.
Questions, comments?
And I wanna thank Melissa and I wanna thank Kerry Berry and my team because this last summer, I mean, it was every week, at least once, maybe twice a week, I was out of town for negotiations. And, you know, I, I can honestly say I didn't, because of Melissa, because of Dave Hanky, I made sure it was Dave Hanky with the water pressure going up. And because of my teams, um, I, I felt completely comfortable and with enough, you know, nothing missed to me. So, uh, yeah, it was very much a lot of my summer was spent. My wife kept saying, you're going again? Why could, how could there need to be another meeting?
And the Board of Public Works, you know, we'll see.
Yeah, yeah. And I would just echo Jerry's comments. I mean, Ryan wouldn't have been near as busy had he not been the sole kind of representative, not piece for the municipalities, really. And so, I, I mean, he's, he's helping our guard with his peers and they're very fortunate to have him here. And, and, you know, he put a lot of time, Board of Public Works put in no time, compared to what Ryan put in. Ryan did a good deal of communicating back to us. And even though it's a behemoth, I mean, the NPBD needed a 35-year contract, um, just to match up with their debt and that helped their bonding and helped improve all that. So, and all to help ensure trying to keep public power at a reasonable cost. So, yep.
And I, I heard from one of my peers from Central City, Chris Anderson, who's been very much a part of these negotiations in the past. And I think he sort of just stepped aside. He told me, he's like, Ryan did a great job.
I did lean on Chris from time to time, cause Chris has, he's been in this negotiation 2002, 2017, so he's been down this route a few times.
Wait, I, motion approved?
Yep, I'm second to that.
Any other discussion?
Warford?
Yes.
Ideas? Lego?
Yes.
Creji?
Yes.
Sweet?
Yes.
Okay, uh, number four, approval of the capacity purchase agreement of Nebraska Public Power District.
So, as we finish, you know, as we were kind of nearing, I would say, endpoint, so it was more beginning of 2025, we started down the contract negotiations for capacity purchase for NPBD. And we, we discussed this, I said, so are you gonna, you know, we, we should probably have a purchase, capacity, a purchase agreement that mirrors the length of our wholesale power contract. As a reminder, this is the contract we have with NPBD. They pay us for our power plant being ready and available for them. And so, we don't operate our power plant directly in the Southwest Power Pool. It's a standby for capacity, meaning capacity is just your ability to serve your load. And so, the value of capacity has gone up drastically. So, this was actually very good timing for a contract renegotiation for Wahoo and the other communities. And I failed to mention previously, but we had engaged, uh, a consultant to help us through some of these contract negotiations, saw all the associates, a gentleman named Joe Hertz. And Joe was initially contracted, and I had reached out to my colleagues at the city of Seward, city of Mendon, um, city of Central City. And then we ended up working with, uh, the city of Broken Bo, the Auburn Board of Public Works. And we ended up working with the city of Franklin and, uh, drawing a blank on another city in Kansas that we worked with. They were all part of this capacity purchase agreement and the other agreement. And they actually shared in the cost of this consultant. Wahoo signed the agreement with the consultant and then we were all set and done. I, we sent them bills and they reimbursed, um, Wahoo Utilities. So, through this capacity purchase agreement, they were looking for another 35-year term. And I'll be honest, this was probably the contract that, taking a very, um, aggressive approach on the contract negotiations, I think paid off the most for Wahoo. My involvement in this contract, the other contract was very much involved, but I can tell you, I, without, you know, with, as being as humble as possible, without my direction and involvement, I don't think we would've got the dollar amounts we wanted from NPBD. And, and, and I will also say, without the consultant backing up some of the things I was saying and feeling, or not necessarily feeling, but the data I was, I was analyzing. So, this new contract is very similar to the other contract. They, we, when they call, we run. Uh, our capacity is, they pay us for available accredited capacity, and that's something different in this contract, but would have been different based on regulations with Southwest Power Pool anyway. The accredited capacity just means that capacity, so if we have 10 megawatts of generators, they're not gonna say that you have 10 megawatts of power available all the time based on some, um, they don't say industry standards, but just what they're saying, generators just like ours across the nation, their availability time. But as we prove that it is available over the next four years, our accreditation can go up as long as we're not unavailable when they need us. So, that's a little more complicated. But, but essentially, right now, they're giving us 365 a KW month, which equated, uh, to, um, uh, just over $400,000 a year, right? And so, 365 a KW month, so if you were to take our 10 megawatts, right? Take that times 10,000, and that's what we got. Take that times 12, that's what we got annually from NPBD. When they initially proposed the new contract, they agreed the capacity market was much higher than it was when they negotiated it previous time. Previous time markets, if you remember, you don't have to go very far back, there was all this power available and all this new wind energy, all this new solar. And there was not really, it was really starting, the prices were going negative. And so, there was like so much capacity, it wasn't worth anything. Fast forward less than 10 years, and now capacity went from being worth, you know, a dollar to, some are seeing bilateral contracts for $10 a KW month. And so, we used all this data and we kind of pushed in to be what we thought the value was. And we couldn't, because it's not a bilateral market, it's not a market that's open. You can only, you only, you can't know exactly details between two parties unless they both share it with you. We're kind of basing a little of this on anyone or, or, you know, just what others are saying. And so, we, um, and we didn't have that availability to us because we were still in a contract for 10 years. We started talking about how can we base the value of capacity? And they landed on the value of the Princeton Road Station, their combustion turbines. And their combustion turbines, and I'll be quick about this so we don't, uh, get too in the weeds. Their combustion turbines worked out to, after they, um, subtracted the, uh, value they got from participating this in the market, um, was about $5.40 a KW month, right? And so, we agreed that that was the value. What they wanted to do was give us that value for the first seven years. And after the seven years, move it back to 365 unless they borrowed money or they did this or did that. And I, I pushed back and with the help of my consultant, I just said, now wait a minute, on one side, you're asking me to sign a contract for 35 years because you need to pay the debt off at 540 a KW month. I'm paying on that debt, whether or not it gets cheaper or not, capacity in the market, I have to pay that debt at 540 a KW month. Why in the world should I on the other side take less than 540 a month for 35 years? Because no matter what, the cost for you, NPBD, if we're gonna base the value off of these combustion turbines at Princeton Road, if it's 540 a month, that's the value? That's the value for 35 years? That's the value for my engines for 35 years? And so, and it, where I knew I had, we had gotten what we wanted was when someone came up to me at one of the meetings and said, well, Tom, Tom's agreeing to what you want. Tom kept the CEO. And he didn't seem too happy about it. So, I thought, well, this is good. This means Wahoo and, and all of those other towns. And one of the, one of the strategies we took was to come together. And basically, all those communities I mentioned, Broken Bo, um, uh, sorry, not Broken Bo, uh, Or, the Village of, City of Or, uh, the city of, um, Franklin, Auburn Board of Public Works. And we all came together and basically said, it's all of us or none of us. None of us will sign the contract either, neither our wholesale power contract or the capacity contract until we can agree to terms. And so, it gave us, not, it gave us leverage, right? I mean, we're, we're gonna allow them to kind of, well, they've agreed to it, you haven't, you know, maybe you should come along, so. And when I say all these things, I wanna say, these were all very open, upfront dialogues. These were not debates or arguments. It was very, very much a great negotiation to be part of. It's the right type of negotiation. It's a negotiation that the customers of public power in Nebraska should be proud of. Because it was open and honest and it was, it was never about winning and losing, even though sometimes, you know, it's nice to feel like you won. It was about what is the true value and what's best for customers of public power in Nebraska. So, that was a very long story of telling you why I think this is a good contract. This is essentially an additional $210,000 to our, uh, con- existing contract we have at NPBD every year moving forward. And as we, they are still willing to, um, work with Wahoo as we are, are looking at an additional 10 megawatts of power. That additional 10 megawatts of power would be, um, under this capacity purchase agreement. And at 540 a KW month, I think the impact to rate payers, I mean, I don't know what the debt service would be yet. We're still working on debt service. We're still doing site and study. We don't know the final cost numbers, but we're hoping that the, the debt service will be very minimal to our rate payers. We believe the capacity purchase agreement would cover most of the debt service for the agents themselves. There might be some substation upgrades that would be, you know, socialized anyway or would be rate payer cost anyway. But we, we're really hoping that that, that does come to fruition with this contract, so. I, I told myself I was gonna give you a short rundown, but then I thought, it's a 35-year contract, this might be the only time I get a chance to talk to you about it. So, I wanna make sure I.
We'll brush.
Yeah. I wanna make sure I informed everyone about it thoroughly, so. Brian's had it here a lot of time.
Well, again, thank you for your work on it. To, I would say that, that the idea of adding capacity was exciting for the Board of Public Works. And now this increase, you know, helps it look a lot nicer.
Yeah.
You know, as we're analyzing it, so. I would make a mention to approve.
Second. Questions? Vocal.
Ideas?
Yes.
Creji?
Yes.
Sweet?
Yes.
Warford?
Yes.
Lego?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ray. Number five, consideration of an application for a waiver to the downtown sidewalk requirements from Market Streets to allow for steps within the public right-of-way. And that was shown a little bit in a, in a, in a document.
This one, this one's better.
Just for building A or did we need?
Yeah, this is for building A. This is Fifth Street. And this is Fifth Street. This is right here is where the old Wahoo super sign stand was, or used to stand.
I'm still next.
Joe, sorry, can you be, this is an encroachment into the public right-of-way, is that right? And so, their action would be to approve this, understanding it is an encroachment.
Correct. Okay, you're acknowledging encroachment. There's two ways you can do it, is either this way or grant easement. Typically, you're getting grant easement, then it's because you want it to be revocable. But it's for, but here you're talking about permanent structures improvements and all that thing. You, you got to it.
Yeah, like I said, I had questioned that before when we talked about. I see not this way, I don't see it very well.
Yeah, I didn't know. Uh, Melissa and I had spoke as far as the steps along Fifth Street. You know, that's pretty common, you see that.
Yeah, I didn't know. Melissa and I had spoke as far as the steps along Fifth Street, you know, that's pretty common. You see that in a lot of strip malls, that type of different thing because of grade change. The only question we was kind of wondering about was on Beach, you know, could those steps maybe be incorporated into the building portion instead of being on the right of way? I just wanted to throw that out there. I don't know, design a building and whatnot, but anyway, that's essentially why it's on there because of the encroachment and the situation we have on Broadway already, you know, looking at those steps as far as safety in the public right of way as far as walking space and whatnot. So.
So on the north side of the building, I see the steps, and then to the left will be a handicap ramp?
Basically a ramp.
And then? Yeah, it acts like a ramp. So then that will actually be flat, so that would be net zero. The ramp feeling will actually be on the curb closest to the cars. So that's where the grain will fall.
Oh, okay.
Go.
That was just more of a curb.
Retaining wall kind of feel right there along the sidewalk.
So then where's that number 56? That is a wall?
Yeah, so this.
It's a trestre, so.
Oh.
Thanks for that.
Okay, so this will be, this plane will be the same as this plane right here.
Okay.
That's zero. So yes, this will be like a small retaining wall. That will be a planter or a rock garden.
Okay.
And this will, on where this, I don't know, brick pattern is, that will start to slope east. And this will become net zero again, and it starts to fall again and going south. So because of the elevation change from zero here and zero here, these have to be at the same level, we need another step or three steps going down here. So ADA, like around zero or zero entry will be here and here into the building and also here. But then unfortunately, you know, falls on this side. So that was the purpose of this stair. And that's it. And then for safety, this will be a planter box that is, you know, has a proper handrail opportunity for some flowers or rocks or whatever with a handrail and three steps going down. And then, yeah, I, I mean, I had my way and can change the elevation in that short space. I would not have any stairs on the east side here. It's just.
We were wondering if you could put the, if you could put like an entry into here and then a ramp. I don't know how, if there's enough distance to go ramp up to this.
We looked at that, we have a ramp just because of how short that is and how, how we have to go up. I did want to have a small vestibule because we are coming off of the, that is the only entrance into the building coming from the east. So I did want to have a small vestibule there as a buffer zone because it's the rear of the commercial space. It's the entry to the apartment. So what I was trying to do, create a kind of a buffer zone. That buffer zone's there. So this is a secure, oh darn it. So this doesn't show, this is another wall here, gosh, another wall here for security will fob in. And this door is also secured. So there's two doors to get in just to kind of keep the building secure. But yeah, that is something we looked into pushing the stair inward. It just floats. It's on the north side of that, that's that soft scape and it's going to be a different level anyway. I don't see any problem with the stairs going on the side. Right? Because isn't that, if I'm understanding that correctly, this is that soft scape over here. And you're talking, that's going to be, you know, in some spots as much as an 18 inch drop to there down anyway. So you either have the stairs up and beat that or you're going to walk right into the side of it either way. So I don't see any reason not to have the stairs.
It seems to match what's already going to do there.
And that's kind of why we want it soft.
I think the biggest thing probably to think about, which I don't think it's an issue, is if we do put parking there, you're going to have a two-foot overhang. Just making sure there's enough walking space between the landscaped area that's going to be in the public right of way, the steps that's going to be the right of way.
Well, he's got that at six foot. So if we have the two-foot overhang, we still have a four foot.
So we still have four foot. I think that's probably the kind of biggest thing to keep in mind there. Just the people being able to walk safely there, you know, between those couple islands, we've got a vehicle pulling up all the way to the curb, figure a couple foot overhang there and then your, you know, for wheelchairs or whatever else might go, go there. So.
Well, once we get something figured out downtown to green things up, I think a planter there that will let those steps should be great.
Yeah, that's, that's what we're hoping to do.
So a planter to the left of these steps?
No.
Oh, this planter. So you have here.
Yeah, to the, to make, to make it a wall.
Oh, this as a being a planter.
I don't think there's any issue with that.
It's open for transportation that space.
That's my plug.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Yeah, I'm all with him there. So, yeah. Yeah, we have all fall grass or all whatever. So I like to break up concrete, see how much concrete's available. So.
Again, this, there's better plans in this section.
Yeah, that shows the hatch of the soft scape around the perimeter.
Yeah, my point would be like, I see the problem. Do you just need approval on that?
Yeah, we're looking for a waiver of the downtown sidewalk requirements of the public.
On second.
And allowing the.
Per, per the plans, everything.
Is there a second? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Questions? Any questions?
Go call.
Cratchit?
Yes.
Ideas?
Yes.
Niggle?
Yes.
Sweet?
Yes.
Warford?
Yes.
Okay, number six, consideration of a waiver from Market Streets for a four-foot encroachment into the public right of way along Beet Street to allow for landscaping.
So that's the rest.
Kind of the same thing.
Part south of this steps.
And how much does it leave then? How much space are we talking about from that and what the curb is right now?
Six foot.
There's still six feet? So it's a total of 10 feet there right now?
Yeah.
10 feet to the.
And it's still the two-foot overhang there.
The two-foot overhang, you still have four-foot walkage, which is ADA compliant.
Think that makes sense as well?
It's, it's, it's currently parallel parked.
Yeah, well, we're looking at possibly putting angle.
Yeah, they're wonderful angle parking there.
Because there's a lot of people using that parking lot.
I just wouldn't know, but it has design. Sure. There's no two-foot.
No.
So there's six foot currently.
Any other questions?
Six foot segment.
Two segments?
I think that's a great idea though.
Go call.
Cratchit?
Yes.
Ideas?
Yes.
Niggle?
Yes.
Sweet?
Yes.
Warford?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Players' comments, really not too much. I've got it involved in a meeting that's going to be held next Tuesday. Rook County Commissioner's Economic Development Group, the lady that, I got a, two of the lobbyists in the legislature. She called me and I said, this is the county DMU city, but firm that's going to work, would be willing to work with the rural area of Saunders County for economic, rural, rural area. So it doesn't really affect us other than us having a two-mile jurisdiction. I told her most likely, whatever it's going to be, it's probably not going to be east of town because of the mean situation. And around, you can with the issues they had with the solar farm. So it's probably going to be west of Wahoo and southwest of Wahoo. So we're meeting with them after they, kind of, we're meeting next week. So I want to have council members.
I, I know Kevin mentioned, Kevin's sort of mentioned with the fence there on Fourth Street, that it's going to be that off the curb that we want to consider making Fourth Street a one-way because they're talking that fence is going to be five, 10 foot into the street.
I, I don't, I don't think that would be necessary right now.
But, but, so it's, when it does go and the construction is out there, we don't have to scramble. It's ready to go if they do put the fence out there. Because that's something we need, you know, should look at discussing before. And just once the fencing goes out to the street, because it's going to be too tight to have traffic go in both directions. That street's pretty narrow to begin with. And if you put 10, take 10 foot away, you're taking away almost half the street. And if you have two-way traffic, it's going to be a nightmare. There's going to be accidents.
I don't know, why, why do they need to, on the south side, why do they need to have it pass the current curb?
That's what I say. I mean, as far as the fencing, what was discussed is Melissa, Joe and I would discuss that at that point in time of what needs to be moved and whatnot. I mean, I, I would think we're, our objective is going to be to try to keep that off of the street. I guess if it's a discussion point that if it does need to get shoved out there and you want to talk about the one way that, when that maybe does happen, so that's done ahead of time, so we're not waiting, I.
That's, that's what I said. If, if it's decided that the fence needs to go there, we've already got it in place to make it a temporary one-way instead of waiting, well, we got to wait till we get it back on the council and might have to wait a week till we can discuss it.
Maybe add some additional safety measures for the.
Just, as, as if needed. I'm not saying we put it in place. It's, if it's determined that the fence has to go out, then you guys are already authorized to turn that into the temporary one-way for each boundary we need it to.
Because, yeah, I, I'm kind of like Melissa. I, I don't feel that that fence needs to be out there until, you know, we get to the stage where we're, we're actually adding angle parking in my mind because there's more right of way there already. But. Are we comfortable that last, last meeting we gave the authority to staff?
No, I'm fine with that. I'm saying.
No, I mean, so they could make that decision and come to us if necessary.
Yeah, I just don't want to delay them if they need to go out and all of a sudden they got to wait and they come to you guys on Wednesday after we just made it. Now we got to wait two weeks before we can make a decision on it.
Right.
Can we make a motion, make a three reading, your, three reasons and your form of vote to have that, that act like that?
I think it would be a, a resolution that would be.
It'd just be a lot of this.
Yeah.
But instead of, you know, like you said, if they came in on Wednesday, Thursday after our meeting and they determined the fence is out there, we got to wait 14 days before we have a next meeting.
Haven't done it ahead of time in case.
It's just there.
To be approved.
If needed, staff can just say, yeah, we have to put the fence and this turns into the one-way at that time.
Have a resolution for the next meeting?
Just a thought to discuss it more at the next meeting. Kevin brought it up as a possibility, the fence is going to be more out there. That's one thing else.
Meeting adjourned.
Can you stop that screen?
I'll try.
Stop streaming and stop recording.
He hasn't heard that since he was 10.